All right. Good morning, everyone. Today's date is February, I'm sorry, Friday, October 8th, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m. We're here to have our commissioners report. Due to the fact that we would not have a formal funding, we will combine our workshop and our report meeting in today's session. First thing we have is a pledge and an invitation by the commissioners.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Battle with the Constitution. Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for the gift of this day, for allowing us to be a part of this day that you've made, Father. I just want to thank you, Father, for your grace and mercy, for all the many wonderful blessings that you give us every day. Father, I just also want to remember those who are family and friends that are ill this morning, but the ones that are carrying heavy burdens on their heart. Father, may you just lay your healing hand on them and minister to each one of us today according to our needs in your will. Heavenly Father, I pray that you would just go with us throughout this day, that you would just protect us, that you keep us safe as we go about doing our business, and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, our first items today is to approve the minutes of regular meeting on September 27th, 2021, and special meetings of September 24th, 2021, and October 1st, 2021. You've all had a chance to look at those. So do I hear a motion that we would approve those minutes? It's written. I'll make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Dale. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Just stay up there. Just augur.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Miss Phillips.
Bear with me. I have a few. Okay. The first thing I have is a budget amendment, and it is to recognize unbudgeted revenue for the general fund, insurance recoveries, in the amount of $12,569.89. And this is revenue that we received due to a broken pipe, and it caused water damage at the Justice Center.
Okay, you've heard the request on a insurance recovery, on a budget amendment in the amount of $12,569.89. Do I hear a motion that we would approve this budget amendment? Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Okay, my next budget amendment is to recognize unbudgeted expense for insurance recoveries in the Justice Center in the amount of $988.42. This was paid to Louis Flores for water plumbing. And then I also have another unbudgeted expense for the Justice Center for insurance recoveries in the amount of $7,692.50. And this was to Cat Rock Plumbing to do the repair. And that's a total of $8,650.92.
Okay. So you've heard the expense reported on the insurance recovery and the payment to Louis Flores for the extraction of water and then the payment to Cat Rock Plumbing for the repair to the pipe. So do I hear a motion to approve those expenses? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
My last budget amendment is to recognize unbudgeted expense for the Justice Center for insurance recoveries in the amount of $3,918.97. And this is for carpet tech, for also additional carpet cleaning and other carpet maintenance due to the water damage. And this total invoice, let's check that out. The total invoice was $4,029.40 and $110.43 was paid out of the building and grounds.
You've heard the request on these expenses. Carpet tech, insurance, money's paid out of insurance recovery, and also money's paid out of the building grounds. So do I hear a motion to approve these expenses? Motion made by Commissioner Dale. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Okay. Moving on to my line item transfer. I have a, my first one is for the county clerk from her office equipment in the amount of $1,620.1 to her postage in the amount of $1,620.1.
You've heard the line item transfer request for the county clerk from her office equipment and postage in the amount of $1,620.1. Do I hear a motion to approve this line item transfer? Motion by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
My next line item transfer is for the Justice Center Building Grounds Maintenance in the amount of $387.49 to the janitorial supplies for the Justice Center in the amount of $387.49.
Line item transfer from the Justice Center to janitorial supply in the amount of $387.49. Do I hear a motion to approve this transfer? Motion by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
My next line item transfer is for precinct three for, from his fuel in the amount of $3,000. Also for precinct three, his lubricants in the amount of $2,000 to his equipment, maintenance, and repairs in the amount of $5,000.
Line item transfer from precinct three from $3,000 for fuel, $2,000 for lubricants into his equipment, maintenance, and repair in the amount of $5,000. Do I hear a motion to approve this line item transfer? Motion by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
My final line item transfer is for the airport conference seminars and news in the amount of $1,500 and to the airport fuel and lubricants in the amount of $1,500.
Line item transfer from the airport from their conference and seminars and news of $1,500 into their fuel and lubricants of $1,500. Do I hear a motion to approve this transfer? Motion made by Commissioner Dale. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item for the treasure.
I don't have any too.
Okay. I must get down to, Jesse has a point, I think, coming at 10:00 this morning. So Jesse, if you want to come up and lead the ride.
Sorry for jumping in, but I've got to meet the carpet, excuse me, shade adjuster on the carpet of the Justice Center. Hopefully we can get something done. We'll briefly, folks, want to talk about PASS, the professional alarm system that we've been using. So the company's called PASS. It's a professional alarm system. We use them for the fire alarm system here in this building, which that's what we approved last time for the fire alarm panel. And then here recently, we approved PASS also for the panic buttons. Panic buttons are for the juvenile building over at 9th Road, Portman, J.J.A.P. over at Houston Street, and for the old juvenile building that was called Carla, Mevere, and Cassiar. So that's what I wanted to talk to you on, go briefly. With the panic button used in PASS, I've submitted three different times. And the first one was in July. It was for $13,085. But then we found some panic buttons, and that's what I'm trying to cover here. So we found some panic buttons that they could use. So then they lowered it down to $11,663. But then when they came in for the installation, which was this past Monday, the panic buttons that we had, where we couldn't use those. So therefore, we had to go with 18 brand-new panic buttons. So that jumped it up, it only jumped it up $663. So the total bill's going to be $13,718. And at one time, they had to lower it down to $11,000. The original bid was for $13,085. And the final bill is for $663. So we're at a total of $13,718.60. That is the final bill. Just wanted to make sure we were okay. The problem with the panic buttons is originally that panic button's supposed to be installed firmly against the wall or underneath the desk. There's a little spring, it's called a tamper switch. That little spring, if it's not pressed firmly against something solid, that's what helps the alarm panel and keeps it intact. What's happened over the many years is, it's just like that issue. There's a little spring behind there, and that's what keeps that tamper switch in when it's not, when it's just laying on a desk. And at that point, at some point, you're going to lose that little spring, which pushes that little intention tamper switch in there. And the point to it is, at that point, once you lose the spring, then you can walk off with it, you can loose it, and you'll never know about it. So that tamper switch is a very important item. So I said just go with 18, that don't be visited on it. And that's where that comes from. Those three locations, so the contract calls for three different contracts, and it's $40 a month at each location to have those panic buttons.
Okay. So the bill that we're going to modify is for the actual product and service.
Correct.
In the amount of $13,718.60. And then in addition to that, each building will have a $40 monthly fee to monitor if they're pressed.
We have paid already $5,834.50 toward that $13,718.60. So that's leaving a balance of $7,887.
Okay. And so what we're looking for is a motion to approve the rest of the payment to CAS in the amount of $7,887. Motion made by Commissioner Dale. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King. Any further discussion? Just a note to all the employees. When they install these in your office, if you're not there and you want to put somewhere else, contact them. Don't just try to look at yourself. That's what happened to these things, something like that. Say, if you can be there or let Jesse know where you'd like it installed, it's he'll go with them. And when they install, and when they do install it, don't relocate. Okay?
That's right.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? All right. Now your next item.
The next item is Johnson Controls. That's an interesting subject. We've had a lot of bills on them, folks, and we've called about it. I've called about it quite a few times. Part of that, part of the problem is because those thermostat's constantly go out. And I wish we could just make one service call, but they're all going out at different times. See, they're real hot, they're not working. There's been an issue with them. And the last issue that we had was the thermostat in the caseworkers in the basement. The thermostat was not working. It was hacked a few weeks ago. They came and looked at it. They decided it was the thermostat that's on the order of those. And they came in, Johnson Controls came in Monday. As he was replacing it, it was still not working right. So he, the service guy, the local guy, Dale Johnson, he got to looking at where the pneumatic actuator is up in the ceiling. He took it down, and he called me down there. He took pictures, I took pictures of it. Those pictures actually show where the, up in the ceiling, the pneumatic actuators, what corroded. There's the valve that goes in there, and it's not hooked up. So that was part of the problem. So when he showed me that, and I wish I brought those pictures to you, which I didn't, but at that point, it corroded, it's not working. So I said, sure, it is not all, not all of that bad. So we went down to another, this county clerk's office, actually, and found three or four more of those pneumatic actuators, and they're completely corroded. So at that point, we realized we have an issue with Johnson, with pneumatic actuators. The only thing, what I'm proposing to the court is we need to fix the one down in the basement that's not connected. We need to consider looking at the rest of them. And there's about 30 pneumatic actuators throughout the building. So I called Johnson Controls, just to give you a rough estimate. Not submitting it for approval. I just wanted to make you aware of it. That proposal from Johnson Controls, if he was to convert those to a digital electronic thermostat, which maybe in the future we would have a new HVAC system, then those would work. We're proposing $140,000 to replace all of the actuators, to convert them into a electronic heating actuators. He gave that information, so that you would consider that.
Yeah, what was the price on the non-enchanted?
He never did provide that. So I asked for two bids, one for the pneumatic actuators and one for the electronic. And I died three minutes before I walked out of the office.
Okay. Harold, you're on the agenda today to talk about Johnson Controls. Let's kill two birds with one stone. And tell us your take on this.
I take all this, we had Johnson Control. And we went away from Johnson Control. I thought it was just, then one person, this was probably part of it. But we sat here, first party, and it would be, we had the same problem this time as we had the time before with Johnson Control. Nothing ever gets fixed. It just keeps kicking the can down the road. For one thing, and for one better time, we might fit Johnson Control, and we had empty the can for the other one here.
Pardon?
Probably. We seem to have better controls over our air conditioning. And it wasn't, they would come in, Johnson Control seems to do. They come in, they do something, doesn't fix it, and we get a $5,000 off it. And me and King talked about it. We had $140,000 for.
Actually, yes. Well, one of the issues we had when we didn't have Johnson Control was because they installed the system, and lots of it is computer-based. And none of our other providers could take care of the computer issues that we had. And so we had to go to Johnson Control in order to do that. That's how they modified and set lots of those things, is through a computer company. And so we went back to them, got in conversation with them. And that's helping. I would say this, we're on the committee to see about our American Rescue funding. And one of the things Jesse and I have talked to both Johnson Control and Anthony Mechanical about possibly getting a new HVAC system. I would believe it might qualify under these conditions in that they would do away with the boiler chiller system, and they would install individual systems in each room. And that way, we wouldn't be sharing air and things like that. So we're thinking that may be a way to make the qualifications of this American Rescue. Unclear if that's the answer. But we have also just spoke to them about getting a new system and doing away, we could do away with the big boiler system that we have right now, even if we didn't go to this new system. They make smaller boiler systems. And that way, it wouldn't be so reliant on just that one. You know, it's sort of like the grinder at the jail. We have two of them, and one of them is sort of in a standby mode. And that way, if one breaks, then you've got the other. So before, my recommendation would be, before we do anything to repair anything, that we follow through and see how well we can do with this rescue funding, and see if any qualify.
We have had, still have some serious issues with our heating and air conditioner in this building. So we've had problems for a long time. And I'm with Harold. I haven't been totally satisfied at all with Johnson Control's work and the pricing. On their behalf, I did speak to Jesse. Since he's been here, a certain large agency operator here taking care of our business, we've called him a lot more. Jesse's been very active in trying to take care of things for us. I appreciate it. But he has had to call quite a bit more. That's why I really just want to get him to be. Before we look at spending $120,000 for actuators or anything else for replacing that system, I'd be in favor of looking at several options. We're going to have to spend a lot of money at some point in time trying to update that system. But we need to look at our options and do some research on it and see what would be our best avenue.
And they should consider that, freezing that. If you can open up the two doors in the office, the ends of those offices, boys might have a bunch of kids, and you can walk in there, and you can almost make a chicken.
Can you spin that way since I've been here for 12 years nearly? Yes.
And then you can go through the trees in the office, and even the justice office. Walk down the hallway, if it's cold, and you walk in the justice office. They're sweating, like.
What was that? I sweat a lot.
We don't have any, they've never fixed the right directions. I realize the system is old. The turn is going to pop down.
Well, the problem is, if we don't do something, we end up spending $130,000 in service costs to repair it.
They've got a home system.
Yeah, and we still got a home system.
I'm more all board to do the same issue. Because what is the point?
The only question I have is, I agree 100%. We need to go in a different direction. That one pneumatic actuator that's completely not functioning. You want to go ahead and get that repaired so that that option.
Can I give you a price on what we'd take to replace that one? I'd like to see a price on it.
A price, just for that. Just that one, that link needs to be fixed so we can have either cool air or heat.
If you would give us a little information on that one.
That one.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Does that satisfy your item, Harold? All right. I must get down to some of our guests. Phyllis Wall's here on the Christmas Downtown Balla County Monetary Committee. Phyllis?
Hi, everybody. And we just want to thank you for allowing us to be here. We always learn something when I come, so we appreciate y'all. We're back.
What did you learn today? What did you learn today?
I learned that, like, oh, I mean, I kind of already knew it was an old building, but you know, like, the problems. And I was just thinking about other situations where I've been and put in the new systems and how, you know, like at first, that is, you know, you knew that, how that worked, you know. And so it turned out great. The times I've been in, it's turned out great in that situation. That has nothing to do with why I'm here, but I did learn. So, yeah, it's good to be here.
It's always something to remember.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and back to the historic old buildings, you know, they just do take a lot of care, you know, and, but they're working. So thank you for letting us be here. I'm just going to start out, I'm going to introduce Tori Huddleston, who is the Special Projects Manager for Main Street. And she's going to start, and then she's going to introduce some of the other ones, and then I'll come back up at the end and visit with y'all. But we just want you to be aware of kind of where we are. So, Tori.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So just kind of as a quick recap, I was here probably about a month ago to talk about some new holiday decorations that we were doing for downtown. Obviously, with the new streetscape, we can't do the original snowplains that we've been doing for the past few years. And so instead, we decided to kind of look at what would be most cost-effective and time-effective for downtown, for staff, and just to kind of give a facelift to our holiday decor along with the streetscape. And so we did a little bit of research, and the, I reached out to Christmas Decor at Lubbock, and I met with Mike Stevens, and he's here with us today. He'll talk about some of the more detailed information about the electricity and all of that stuff that I am not qualified to talk for. So what we discussed with Mike, and it would be lighted. And so instead of having the big snowplains, it would be similar, but a little bit different. And then we also discussed having some uplighting here at the courthouse on three separate sides, just to kind of give some illumination to the courthouse along with the Christmas treats that will be done by us as well. And so the agreement that we worked on with Christmas Decor in Lubbock is a lease, and that's a temporary installment for the garland or the uplighting. They are multicolored, and so you can, if you decide to do red one day, you can do red, if you want to do green, you can do green, and so on. And so they would put them up in time for the second Saturday in November, which is November 12th, 13th. And they would be taken down after the holidays, probably around the first or just right after the first, just depending on scheduling. So the uplighting here will all be connected to a transformer and put into a outside outlet. So similar to how we put in the trees last year, it would just be connected to an outside source. And that is what we're looking at doing for electricity and any others like that. I highly ask that you talk to Mike for those, just because he would know all of the ins and outs for how everything's going to be installed. All of this can be permanent, if you would like it to be. But right now, we're just looking at a lease for the holiday, and we are looking at doing a three-year contract just so that we can get a good idea of how things would go within three years. So the cost for that, we're just doing the lease is $12,096. And so looking at time, stack-wise, equipment-wise, that city staff usually has to put into purchasing, it kind of really evens out, and it's, it's an overall a really good bet. So I'll let Mike Stevens and Renata Jack, if you all have any other questions.
Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. I guess the reason I'm here is because I'm a cheerleader and I'm not a real good cheerleader, so I will just say what I've got to say and hopefully it will come out. I walked the courthouse the other day with Mike and his partner, Dusty, is that correct? And he's the one that actually does the, Dusty does the installation from what I understand. It seems like to me, and I don't know anything about electricity, it seems like to me it's a very simple installation, very non-invasive, so, and of course Mike can explain all that to y'all better if you need to know. Um, I guess the cheerleader part is Plainview is in a prime location. It's in between Lubbock and Amarillo, where y'all go off the small communities that we govern here. And since I have come on board with the city and the downtown specifically, we are at a prime time to capitalize on this position that we're in. We need to promote downtown Plainview and the whole community. And to do that, we've got to do something special and we've got to step outside of the box a little bit. And to do that, the courthouse is a perfect place to do it, to light it up, to make it special, to give people a reason to come down here. The, the retail businesses are coming. Uh, it's like every day, somebody new is wanting to come in to downtown and that is super exciting to me. We've been working on it for several years. With the streetscape happening, I know Melinda and her office is about to pull their hair out with the construction, but whenever it's all over, I think it's gonna be so worth it and it's gonna be a reason for us to get the word out to the whole surrounding area, all the way from Amarillo to Pasllo, to have Plainview being the destination spot. And we can do that if we have a little bit of extra, uh, money for the bank, you know, let's, let's get it for a moment, let's, um, get the spotlight where it used to be. But we're gonna have to spend a little bit of money and I hate being behind the HVAC system problem. I mean, that's, that's a deal we've got to have it. This is a want-to-have-it with what we're talking about, but I think it's gonna help the whole community in the long run if we can invest a little bit of money and time into what we're trying to do here. So I would ask that you would consider that and I appreciate all the company. I know it's hard and easy, Tom. So I guess that's all I've got to say and now I will let Mike Stevens answer any questions I might have. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I can kind of run through it a little bit if that might spark a question or two and then speak in general terms of just where the lighting industry is and so my conceptual duties, since it's not my primary line of business, I'm a printing company and one of my customers throughout Northern America is a parent franchise of Christmas Decor. And so the gentleman that founded that, two brothers, they all work together on the market together and so my firm does the marketing of these Christmas lights for 375 locations throughout Northern America. And when I learned a little bit about selling it through the years, I stopped with the local franchise came available and then it bought it and had a good partnership with a friend of mine whose wife has been working with me for 25 years in my business and he runs a construction, landscape design, that sort of thing. So, um, he's the crew side of it and I'm the business side of it, but as in all lights, where we converted over to LED, as you, as you know, and in the early days of LED, the price was up there and the quality of the light was kind of down here. It'd look at a light, it'd be very bright, you know, it'd almost be harmful to your eyes and so we've been, been able to improve those things over the last few years. And so technology changes, so the first thing there, I don't see anything technology changing coming down the road that would take it out of date or alleviate it or make other computerized systems which do control it, uh, out of it. So it'd be in complacency with your, your phones, your computers, it'll go on forward with whatever environment you're in and, um, OS or Microsoft or whatever it is that does on that. Now, off this, in the electrical side of it, so I'll cover the not-so-fruity part of it first, the technology's gotten there, but it's not gonna change for a while. The second thing is the electricity. You know, years ago, we used to have to count how many infrareds and bulbs you had on the screen string before you went to burning out a light socket or on a trip and everything being LED, we actually go to a low voltage converter that's a, that's a transformer all its own. And so we'll supply a transformer that takes it down to low voltage, so pull-on electricity's minuscule. Like one of these light bulbs is gonna be like 1.7 amps or something like that or carbon that's on it. The building itself is gonna be, has some total of less than 10 and a half, 12, somewhere around in there, because it's size goes down. So the, the infrastructure itself will be a light panel and be about yay big, be next to the ground shooting up. When you set the angle of that and get it right, so it'll go up about 75 foot on, on the side of the building. These LEDs become very intense and the cool thing is, is, is instead of buying just a color of light, they will change. So we'll install a app, it is ours, and, uh, we'll put that app on your phone and, you know, when you do that, you, everybody's got apps on their phones, but some of them are a little more intrusive than others, meaning that they'll sell that data, then you start getting advertisements from everybody, that it's our app, so we don't sell it to anybody. Uh, so it won't hurt you that way and I'll knock memory in it to hurt anything. And, and it has no other function, so it doesn't try to sell you anything or do anything. Uh, you'll pull it up, you'll pick a color scheme, you just dial a little long to yellow, red, blue, whatever it may be. If I can do a candlelight flicker at night if you wish, uh, for during Christmas, you'll wanna go with those Christmasy top colors, but you can even change that from day to day and you can put bulldog red up, you can do that. Uh, if your private school gets into the playoffs and you wanna change the colors, then you can do that. I just caution about who you put on that chain of events, you know, if it's on two phones, one person can walk out and change what somebody else has, has just done. I'll let you solve those discussions.
Jimmy's the one that's laughing the most, he's the one, the prankster, he's gonna do that.
We'll need, we'll need, uh, you know, your electrician or approved to toss into your electrical source and that gets us to, to hammer down the, the transformer and then pass that, it's, uh, pretty easy. If we can work close enough to these, uh, uh, outlets that are in the light poles, we don't even need that. We can plug into those so we can bury that light and, uh, that'll be permanent and it'll be out-of-water damage and that sort of thing. That's kind of what we thought about when we walked around the other day, but it's flexible. There are other products, um, and so I'm, I'm open to discuss anything you might have in mind or heard of, but, but that's my suggestion.
Any questions? Yes, I, I would like to see some sort of diagram or something you guys talk about. You mentioned you walked around in, in the building, but I'd like to see some sort of diagram, see exactly what you have in mind and can, can I be of help with that?
Main part of that is, you know, we measured this, was looking at three sides, measured the sides and then we looked at how, you know, it's, you know, it's not a flat building, it comes out, goes in, comes out, so to create as few a shadows as we can, what would the positioning and the angle be on that light? That's the main part that you're gonna see.
Where do these lights mount or how do they mount?
Uh, they'll, uh, they'll stake into the ground and then the wiring will be buried and, uh, you know, just protect that from moisture and, uh, the connections are seamless, you know, we'll measure that out to the source and so there won't be a ton of connections that are underground.
What about the lights in, in front up here on the east side or where, with concrete, what do you do with those lights?
We'll, we'll, uh, take a diamond cut saw and go into the seam of that concrete, create us a little bigger trial in there and then we'll go in there with a permanent caulking and bury it that way.
So on the, let me just ask this, on the three sides that you're looking at, because I wasn't here the other day, those three sides are in the ground, not the concrete side, right? I mean, we're, I think that we're just kind of talking about two different things. I think we're talking about this seasonal thing that we're gonna have every year that we're, uh, that Tori talked about, but also we're kind of giving you the option to do like a long-term Hill County extended contract with the lights to do them all year long. So what we're here today talking about is seasonal. We're just talking about from November through the first of the year.
Sure, so we show up, put it out and then get it backed up if you wanted to.
And those would be, the three sides would be staked into, I believe, the dirt. I don't think there's a third, a fourth side in that option. I may be wrong, so correct me. So, but like, you know, we talked about at the previous meeting, like if we wanted to have these at the courthouse permanently where like when, you know, we did the blue light thing at the jail, you know, you could do, hit the blue lights up or what, you could use them for different things, like Fourth of July, you could do red, white and blue. So there's also that part of this that y'all need to consider because that can happen as well. So what, what we're here talking today about is the seasonal aspect of from November through January of every year. And then what y'all wanna do as a county, we can discuss that further with Mike and the company and y'all could, you know, have some other meetings about that. Does that make sense?
And then the other, and I know Harold's concerned about the new concrete. The other day when Mike and Dusty and I walked around, it's on the actual sidewalk that goes around the courthouse. It's by the flower beds and it's just cutting, uh, in the seam of that sidewalk is where they're talking about cutting.
And it's to lay the light?
To lay the lights.
We wouldn't cut a hole with those seams already are, we'd just extend that here and then bolt that in there. You know, there's some options to that, you can tunnel, uh, that creates a little bit of an issue, but we've condoed around the side of the building, that's a little unsightly. We thought that was the best solution, we're flexible to do anything, that's not a big deal. I think when you see it, um, and I show you the options of it, you're gonna wanna keep it for year-round. There's not a cost difference at all, it doesn't run anything up. Uh, the three-year lease, uh, it covers everything. Light goes out, we replace it, some catastrophic happens and, uh, light or whatever, we replace it. Uh, so there's not any ongoing maintenance or what has that transformers, kind of protect the building so, you know, something can't hit us or hurt me that way. So it's relative, you know, being low voltage, it's relatively non-invasive. It's not like somebody's fingers on it and they're gonna get hurt, get red on it, that sort of thing. So those days are not.
You know, this, this whole building is, is pretty building, it's sort of, I thought for years and years it'd be nice to have some sort of lighting on this building, but I think today what I would like to see is, is a written proposal, proposal, detail exactly what, what we're talking about doing. And on this figure here, this $12,000 figure, is that per year, is that three?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to that. If y'all have any more questions for Mike on the installation or anything? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, you know, what we are talking about is, is two different things. This, this season, we're just, we're talking about starting this this season. The fee, the $12,000 is a lease fee and that will carry us through this year. It will be $12,000 each year unless we add something, uh, we determine we wanna add something to, you know, more light poles or do all of that, but this is something that we're doing as a downtown district. So we're not asking you for $12,000 if that's what you're, yeah. What we want you to do, we want no HVAC system for the county or whatever, what we are doing, um, and let's just talk this year, we're talking this year and hooking it up, um, like they talked about and then it will be, the transformer and everything will be taken away after this year unless we decide as a county to continue and we will have that discussion and get a proposal. This year what we're talking about doing is doing the every other light post and doing the uplights at the courthouse. And if you go to any town in rural America, the courthouse that's situated like this is like the focal. So we definitely want to do something here and we definitely want to add something here. And when we talk about tourism and, and people doing business here, um, it's a county thing. We have the whole county that comes here. We, and we do have people from Lubbock and Amarillo that come here and shop all the time, but this is the county scene and so it's important that we represent it as such and when we have events, I mean, we want to encourage everyone to come here. So the fee is $12,000 something dollars each year for the lease and we've all experienced having to do it ourselves, putting up the Christmas lights, having the city put them up, you know, whatever. So lease was just the best option. We don't have to worry about it, they take care of it if there are any problems, it's just a good thing. You know, $12,000 sounds like a lot of money, but when you think about what we're getting and the care and the quality of the product and all of that, it is worth it. Now to answer your question about the $12,000, we, you know, we can do it together, we can't all, any, none of us can do the whole fee. So we are getting sponsors, um, to help with this cost every year. We're, we're asking different individual businesses and whatever and trying to help. We're asking, um, the city for $2,000 a year, we're gonna ask the county for $2,000 a year and then, um, EDC, we've asked them to participate in this, um, we're asking key industry businesses to help in this and different things. So we're gonna, it's an accumulative amount that we're gonna come up with each year for the $12,000. So what we're asking the county for today is the $2,000 yearly commitment towards the holiday season in downtown. Does that answer kind of?
I was kinda like, can you open up for me that if the lady vacs away to your personal garden?
No, no, no. You know, it's, it's just something that we haven't done. I mean, I don't know that it's ever been done here where we partnered together to make, uh, the hol, this Christmas season is our one big thing, you know, like Pumpkin Day, Sempola Day, that they have that. Our, this is our thing here. We, we're gonna hone in on the Christmas season, make the best, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have the Christmas tree lawn now that we used to have. We're trying to bring all of those things, you know, ultimately we want to have an ice skating rink, you know, on one of the streets and have that, you know. We have great vision and great ideas, but we have to start somewhere, something to do that.
I'm thinking if we had ice skating glass, that would wear everywhere.
Everywhere. And we, and we didn't have to be responsible for it, right? You know, just go out and, but anyway, so that's, that's where we are today, Katie, and Commissioners, is that, you know, we, we're seeking $2,000 a year at this point to, to carry this from today on, that we can do the lease and, you know, add some things to it each year. And then, of course, we really want y'all to consider an, an agreement with the company to keep them all year long so that they can be used for other holidays and, and our courthouse can, um, have the lighting all the time. But that's something totally different that we do need to look at further down the road. Unless you wanna look at it before the season and that's perfectly great too, because then your installation would be a little bit different, right? Not much? Okay.
No, we're gonna leave the wire in place.
Okay. And then just take the transformer.
Yeah, everything will be buried.
So it really wouldn't be difficult, but you would have to have a continuing agreement with them because what we're doing is just gonna be seasonal. So like if you wanted to carry it on, that's something that you would need to enter into with them to, uh, so that they would have that agreement to maintain that and if you have any issues, you know, all of that.
Well, I'd, I'd like to get a proposal for the year-long deal because, uh, just to loom bait the courthouse, uh, for security reasons and things like that, because it's dark up here tonight.
Well, it'd be beautiful, people come through, you know, we have the mural and they get this in the courthouse and it would be really nice to have that, so.
Phyllis, are you just very confident that you're gonna be able to get participation in this from the start of the year?
I, this, this season, we're committed, we have it. Well, with your help.
We need it for three seasons.
We need it for three seasons and I'm pretty confident if, if like y'all come through, uh, yes, we, we will have that $12,000 for three years and I believe beyond that. Uh, everybody that I have talked to has been so energetic and excited to do it that they committed to it, so.
Where would the money come from?
It's probably gonna come from up here.
Okay. Uh, let's see, she is showing, uh, we have $1,929 in miscellaneous expenses and in, in contingency fund, we have $46,500.
Go ahead.
There's a contingency on the contingency.
Yeah, you wanna watch your contingency, but, but what I'm saying is-
Yeah, you wanna watch your contingency, but what I'm saying is, we do have a few expenses out right now that haven't come in yet, that are gonna come out of that miscellaneous. But usually, when we're talking about Christmas, stuff like that, we bought lots, we bought Christmas trees, we bought stuff, we pay it out of the miscellaneous, the non-departmental miscellaneous. So we would, we would have to move some up there if y'all choose to do it.
As you noticed earlier, when Linda was up there, was transferring a lot of money around. This time of the year, we'll start running out of money and not find money, so.
It'll get, my deal will get longer as the months get closer to here.
I think lots of the items that we have.
I don't think you would, and I'd really be excited to see this happening. And again, I appreciate you guys, Renata, for all you do. You've been very active in trying to promote the downtown of our county, and I do appreciate you, and it'll be a lot for us.
You know, we drink big, and so, you know, this is just the beginning of what we hope it will be. Of course, I am getting older, so, you know, how many more years I'm gonna be here, but.
The only thing is, every time you come, you need money.
And Chief, is there, is there any, I know we're just gonna do that this year, is there any? Because I know there's something that we cannot designate county funds for, future county funds.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. So, and Linda just passed me a note asking me this, and I wrote her an answer, and I'm gonna kind of expand on that. But I guess if we're just talking about this year, it's kind of dependent on, are we doing this on a permanent basis or as part of the downtown association's thing? And I think, I would like to see us have, obviously, if we do something on a permanent basis with Christmas decor, I think we'll have an agree, I assume a written agreement with y'all saying who's gonna do what, how much we're paying. If we, if it's just more part of, we're giving two thousand dollars to the downtown association, and I would probably like to draw up a pretty short and simple agreement. Just y'allers, as you know, are allowed to do agreements with groups to promote tourism and economy, so that's not a problem. Either one, since it's a multi-year thing, we're gonna need the non-appropriation clause in, which just basically says, Commissioner Squirt doesn't have to appropriate money in future years. And that is for, just for our non-county people, and maybe for y'all, I don't know. But it's for, to keep, the Texas Constitution says the county cannot incur a debt without levying an interest and sinking tax and funding the interest and sinking fund to pay that debt. And so that keeps us from that multi-year contract becoming a debt that we would have to raise our base taxes for. So that would be the only reason for that. So that answers everybody's question.
Okay, well, like I say, my take on this would be, let's consider this year, the expense for this year. And then, like I said, I would like to provide to give us a proposal for a permanent situation. Maybe after this, you know, like in January, some of the court, maybe consider a permanent lighting situation, but it's sort of separate from this year.
Sure.
I think it's just a process, you know, but we're in this.
Any further questions, Billis or Mike or anybody?
And we kick our partners well.
Harold, I'll get you really good in the sharing, but you put that in the form of a motion. So we have a motion from Commissioner King to pledge, or I guess, give two thousand dollars to the downtown association.
Actually, to downtown, like, right?
Friends of downtown.
Friends of downtown now.
Friends of downtown.
Yeah, sorry, friends of downtown.
Friends of downtown for their holiday lighting project. Do I hear a second? Second, by Commissioner Kelly, any further discussion? If not, all those, I would say, oh, I'm sorry.
You have to include in your motion that it will be paid out of miscellaneous.
Okay. And then your motion, paid out of miscellaneous expenses. Then our, your second, okay, all right. Any other questions? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed, all right, thank you.
Thank y'all, thank you for allowing us the time, we appreciate it. And we will be back for something, I might just come back, you know, where you call me.
We'll buy you chocolate and coffee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
We have some folks, family heritage division, that I'm gonna talk to, on operating benefits, counting employees through payroll deduction for the upcoming role. Good morning, everybody, good morning. All right, so, yes, my name is Israel Flores, and this is Michelle Flores. We represent Love Life Family Heritage Vision, and we specialize in supplemental coverage. And all we're wanting to do is, we wanna provide benefits to your employees and give them an option if you guys already do have supplemental coverage. When did I ask you guys, do you mind if I pass you out some information? No, it's not, it's a manual. Okay, so when we're talking about supplemental benefits, why supplemental benefits? So the problem is when you have illness or an accident, when it happens, there's always gonna be two types of costs. Okay, we're gonna have a direct cost, which takes care of doctor bills, hospital charges, and that. However, when something happens, there's indirect costs, obviously, lost wages, deductible, co-payments, travel, and home care. So some of the facts that the indirect cost, it's not covered by your health insurance while you're battling these critical illnesses and injuries, they can sometimes be greater than the direct costs. The solution, our products are designed to help with some of the out-of-popular expenses that can arise when battling serious medical illnesses and accidents. So why does our supplemental coverage make sense to you, county? Employees will benefit, cancer does affect three out of four minimum. Every forty seconds, someone will, in the U.S., will have a heart attack. Ninety percent of the injuries do occur on the job. So these policies that we offer, they're very affordable, they're customized premiums, they can fit any budget. We also administer through payroll deduction. There is no kind of minimums that you need to meet, so what I'm saying is that you do not need to reach a minimum for employees to enroll. The policies are very impactful. Policies are paid directly to the employee, unless they're insured, otherwise, they are paid in addition to their insurance that they already have. Coverage is there guaranteed, premiums are paid on time, only the employee can cancel this. And if they ever decide to change careers or retire, they can. So the premiums, they do not increase with age. And if the employee qualifies, we do return the premiums as incomes, okay? And we're gonna talk to you guys about that right there. That's something very unique to our business. If you look at the back of any one of those brochures there, it talks about a cash value benefit and survivorship. So what that means is, a family or individual never has to use our coverage. We will refund the premium that was being used in the last year. And in fact, a couple of your residents here in Plankton have been able to receive that benefit. Is that something that, as far as myself and my wife Michelle, really do appreciate? We all, currently, ourselves, we are working with you, we want to work with you guys. We're working with Lovick County, and we're also working with Palmer County. We actually have other agencies in their counties that are in this as well, so. But if you look at the cancer policies, I'll read you a little quick lesson. So we look at some of the benefits, one thing that really stands out to families is that a lot of them have no lifetime limits, which means that the policies don't cap out. So for an example, if you're in the hospital with our best plan, coverage gives eight hundred dollars a day, which is your hospital, which is free. So just think about it, example of that is, you know, a ten-day stay, that's eight thousand dollars. We can understand how selfless that would be, we're gonna have to go through something like that, take care of our public services. And then, something that's different, you know, that's unique to us, is we do give a second certificate. And that's something that a lot of people don't appreciate. Do you guys have any questions as far as the benefits that can be provided?
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but let's just say on the cancer.
Yes, sir.
And let's say they didn't go with the lead, maybe, maybe, or, or.
Sure.
On an average person, what would that run on?
On an average, an individual.
And I know there's lots of variables.
There is, and I actually have a little break thing doing that.
That's a great question, too.
Okay, so with cancer, they will run, give or take about eight dollars on the individual.
So like thirty-five.
Correct. So we do, we do have coverages that are individual, we have a single parent, we have a couple, and we also have family.
Okay, and so this would strictly be, you would come in November in our open enrollment, and you would talk to employees that had an interest in your product. And even if one person was the only one that signed up, you're saying that you would offer that service?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions? If not, do I hear a motion to allow Israel and Love Life to be at our open enrollment? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King, any questions? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed. So if you'll be with us, she'll have everything for you to get set up and everything. We appreciate y'all being here, and we appreciate you bringing in these options, all right?
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, since I'm getting around, we'll go to our district partner.
What'd you say?
That's no commentary on me, that's all we do.
Mine is just for the yearly contract that we have with the Attorney General, with the child support division. And what this basically does is we enter the parties into the state registry, you know, so that the businesses have a place to pay the child support, and we give a dollar or something back for that. So that's what this forty-page contract's about.
So you're looking for a motion to approve that contract between yourself and the Attorney General's office? And allow me to sign? Okay, you heard the request, you're calling out your motion to approve her request on signing the contract with the Attorney General. Allow me to sign. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly, any further discussion? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed.
All right, thank you.
All right, and then our next item, Commissioner, please say it too.
We're, we're just changing the uniform companies we work with, Airmark. We've opted out of that contract, and we're gonna go with Centus. It's just a little bit more money annually, but the products they provide are much better quality. They have a bigger line to choose from, and there is no actual contract you can.
How much is it?
It's roughly three hundred dollars per year difference. And that's for eleven, eleven items per person.
And you're proposing that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly, any other discussion? When would this begin?
October fourteenth is the last date on Airmark.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed. And then the last item is my agenda, the first one that I have is, I am currently on the MHMR, our Central Plains Center Board, and my term has expired, and I would like to serve again. And so, do I hear a motion to allow me to serve as a physician? Make a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear it, so you keep comments to yourself. Any questions? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed. Also, if you wouldn't mind, I'm assuming I'll have to sign some type of agreement to do that.
Yes.
Okay. The next item I have is the EMS report from Hill Center EMS for September. They had a total income in September of twenty-two thousand, three sixty-one ninety-one. They had total expenses in the amount of thirty thousand, one fifty-three twenty-seven for a net income of negative seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents. They had three transfers, thirty-two EMS calls, twenty within the city, twelve outside the city. Out of those thirty-two calls, they had eight non-transports, and they had twenty-three billables. All right, any questions on the Hill Center EMS? All right, if not, do I hear a motion to approve that?
Second of motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Dan, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King, any questions? If not, all those, I would say, aye, aye, all those opposed. All right, the next item I have is the Petersburg EMS Financial and Front Report for the Monblock Office. And Ms. Marvel attached a letter, and said, so basically, we don't have a report. It says that, let me just read the letter to you, I apologize for just being late. We have encountered a few issues with our EMS department over the last month, but we have enough to keep everything running as smoothly as possible. Our EMS director left it in July, he had a year-old director standing up for the Monblock. We hired a new EMS director, but fortunately, him and his wife were involved in a serious car wreck last week. With all that being said, I do not have a proper paper for it, I need to report how many runs for Petersburg EMS for the Monblock, therefore, I'm reporting zero. Please contact Mario or myself if you have any questions. And I think, Linda, then you, where you can contact them?
I did, I did talk, I called Mario, the Martinist City Manager, and I did speak with him. And he did indicate, as the letter said, that they had hired a permanent EMS director. And as of, that was probably, I wanna say about two weeks ago, and the wife was still.
and as of, that was probably, I want to say about two weeks ago, and the wife was still in the hospital at that time, I'm not sure if she's been released yet or not, that her injuries were very, very serious, and the husband was recovering from his, and he hoped to be back where he was going to be able to get the paperwork and everything caught up and processed, and at that time, they will provide you with the information you need. But at this time, he assured me that they do have a viable EMS system, they are still, they have paramedics, and they are still running, so I did ask him to keep the judge and the court aware of their, if anything, charges.
They don't have an actual run report, they did provide us a financial statement for August, they had a total revenue of $2,597 for the month of August, they had total expenses of $9,581.72, or a negative $6,994.76. So, hearing the report and the explanations, do I hear a motion to approve the Petersburg EMS financial statement, and with the understanding we'll get a run with that later date? Motion made by Commissioner King, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Daniel, any discussion? If not, all those, if I ever say aye, all right, all those opposed. And then, the last thing I have is, I received a call from Jeffrey Snyder in the city, I also received some correspondence from Kelly Davila, I think I'm saying her name right, at the SPAD. In the city, in the school have entered a grant process called Build Back Better Regional Challenge, and what they have proposed is that the county join them in applying for a grant, and the project concept is a career and technical education center, and I'll treat what Jeffrey would in this, is workforce development is critical for the future of the economic development, and sustainability of agriculture operations in the soundplains. As the agriculturally-based economy of West Texas evolves, the new technology processes, the expansion of skill training will be essential in maintaining a capable workforce. Plainview ISD, the city of Plainview, and Hill County have proposed as coalition sponsors to construct a 25,000-square-foot career technical education center inside the Plainview Hill County Industrial Business Park, in order to better serve students of Plainview ISD, as well as the residents of Plainview and Hill County, to desire skilled workforce development training. Texas Tech Innovation Center will be a partner to help with the curriculum development. And so, we're not going to be in the grant process, it's going to be SPAD that is helping them write, the city and school write that grant, and the only thing that we would be out in this process is if they get the grant, would be donating the land for them to build this building out in the business world. And so, at this point, kind of like what they're asking us to do is to send a letter to the U.S. Department of Commerce, helping, showing that we would, we would support this endeavor, and that hopefully that would help their position in receiving. And I'll read the letter that Kelly had written in court approved, and I'll sign it, says, to whom am I concerned? It's addressed to the U.S. Department of Commerce, even off the development, in Washington, they say. Who am I concerned? Hill County is a partner in this, in a potential grant award by the Economic Development Administration to Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant Program. Hill County, along with the Coalition Partner, Plainview ISD, and the city of Plainview, have long been committed to furthering the workforce development, an opportunity for students and citizens in our community to propose for a project with significantly work in developing agriculturally-related workforce development training for both students and adults. The support of this private industry is clearly expressed in our application and highlights the need to align our agricultural economy throughout the South Plainview region, providing equitable access to low-income and minority populations in our community is critical to the future of our workforce development in our community and throughout the region. If we're worried, Hill County and the city of Plainview are prepared to donate the land necessary to develop this program to the Plainview ISD for its internal protection. Locating the career and technical center in Plainview Hill County Business Park would further our commitment to private industry in the area to provide skill. We are looking forward to your consideration. Are you made one proposal?
Judge, I have a question. In the event they get there, how's it going to be funded?
It will be funded, I relate, through the school, because Jeffrey did point out, I asked him to be here, he was out of town today, and Kelly couldn't, but he assured me that this would not require any future funding on behalf of the city or county, and that the only obligation for us would be the tracts of land that we already own, that we would donate that tract of land for them to construct the facility, and that would be our obligation. And so, any other questions? Yep, you know, it provides a specialized training for our students that, you know, we're going to, they'll, they'll, like, be successful, you know, some of our, our area. So, I hear a motion that we would approve, I guess, basically what we're approving is that we would align the city and the school in this grant process, and in that motion, you also will be included, and I can sign this letter and attorney to Jeff. Have a motion by Commissioner Denial, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King, any further discussion? I believe I gave that letter to Jill before, but if I have it before I sign it, I'll have her county attorney.
Good, we did, and I talked to Jeffrey as well, and the only future obligation the county would be to donate the land, and this is part of it, so...
Okay.
And I'm sure, at the time that happens, if it does, we can discuss how that needs to be set up, as far as whether it's outright donation to the school district, or some long-term lease, or something like that, so...
Okay, well, he just called yesterday to make sure that I got his last email, and to emphasize and report that there was no future funding that would be obligated in this process.
I think in these, these kind of grant situations, especially in the federal government, I know from others that more entities you have that are cooperating together, the better it is, more to give it a preference.
Okay, all right, thank you, Judge. All right, any other questions? If not, all those, if I ever say aye, all those opposed. All right, well, I appreciate everyone being here today, and y'all have a good hot, I mean, a weekend, and remember, we won't have a court on Monday, because three of us will be gone, so... All right, if there's nothing further, we'll list that to you, and...